Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I, Don Heikala, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And discharge faithfully the duties of the Office of Planning Commissioner.
And discharge dutifully the duties of the Office of Planning Commissioner.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
And the county of Anoka.
And the county of Anoka.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Welcome, Commissioner.
Mr. Harlecker, we now please call a roll.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Knoblock.
Here.
Commissioner Heikala.
Here.
Commissioner Casey.
Here.
Commissioner Schmalky.
Here.
Commissioner Stevenson.
Here.
And Chair Schwartz.
Here. Our first order of business is to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We need to note that there's a number 11 that will be added under other business. Planning Case 1401, the site plan for Magnum Trucking. Motion by Stevenson, second by Stevens. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the approval of our minutes of our May 18th, 2017 meeting.
Chair Schwartz, so moved.
Second.
Motion by Knoblock, second by Casey. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
And one abstention, Mr. Heikala. Next, we will begin with Planning Case 1701, our first order under old business, 17-10, site plan for a parking lot expansion at Adams Elementary, 8989 Sycamore Street, Anderson Johnson Associates. Mr. Harlecker.
Yes, good evening, Commissioner, Chair Schwartz, and residents. This item was continued from last month. It's an expansion of the parking lot at Adams Elementary School on Sycamore, just west of East River Road. It's this area here. The last meeting, there was a lot of discussion about landscaping, and the commission postponed action on this item to allow the applicant time to submit a revised site plan. Just for an update, what's being proposed is, in addition to the existing parking lot, they're adding a turnaround here, a loop, and this is primarily to increase areas for student drop-off. They're also adding some parking spots along the east end. They are preserving most of the trees. I think two are coming down. They're preserving a large oak in the middle and planting overstory trees around the perimeter of the loop here. To address the concerns with screening for these residents, residential properties to the north, the applicant added evergreen trees here and here, and they're lined up such so that when cars come around the corner, they'll block the headlights coming here, and as they continue around, these evergreens here will block the headlights from going in. They were laid out this way because there are some existing trees back in here that would be in conflict with any other trees back in here. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the site plan with the conditions that the new landscaped areas be irrigated. The evergreen trees must be a minimum eight feet tall. Project complies with Title 11. Gradient and drainage plants be signed off by the engineering department, and all engineering comments be addressed. The proposed lighting will have to be directed away from the residence to the north, and the applicant enter into a site security agreement with the city. If that'll answer any questions. Representatives of the applicant is also in the audience. If you have any questions directly for him. I should note that the public hearing was closed at the May 18th meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Harlecker. Commission, any questions for Mr. Harlecker? Is there anything the petitioner would like to add? No? All right. Commission, your thoughts?
Well, I think they added the trees in the areas that we asked them to. So, and it is their property to be able to
I can't hear you.
to use... Sorry. They've added the trees where we've asked them to change some of the trees. I think didn't...
Did not change the species of the trees.
Change any of the species, okay. But I think that they've addressed the headlight issue and the lighting issue. And it is their property, so I don't see anything that we can not okay on this. Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
I think the applicant has made a good paid effort to address the primary concerns, and I thought the trees to the screening seemed to be adequate. So I'll be approving it.
Chair Schwartz, I have a question.
Commissioner Knoblock.
For Mr. Harlecker. In overall, how many additional trees and their height have been added from the prior submission?
Commissioner Knoblock and Chair Schwartz. Seven evergreen trees. They'll have to be a minimum eight feet tall.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
In Planning Case 17-10, I move that the commission approve the site plan with the following conditions. And I think Mr. Harlecker just read them off, so there are six of them. I'll just refer to that as attached.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Motion by Casey, second by Schmalky. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This is a decision by the planning commission and can be appealed to the city council within 10 days if anyone chooses to do so. Thank you. And our second case under old business, Planning Case 17-13, a preliminary plat, Riverdale Station Apartments, Sherman Associates. Mr. Harlecker.
Yes, this is a preliminary plat for the Riverdale Station Apartment project. Here's the site here, just south of the shopping center and north of the North Star Station and west of Northdale Boulevard. What is being proposed is a split the property into three lots. One lot here for the west apartment building. One lot here for the east apartment building. A commercial building here on the corner, and an outlot for Phase 2 for the future senior housing complex. I would like to note that in granting, in approving this, should the commission approve it, should also reference that there is flexibility required because of the lot size. The ordinance has a maximum lot size of two acres, and the applicant is proposing lots that exceed that two-acre maximum. The reason for that and findings for that would include that the larger lots provides for better integration of uses. It allows for increase in site amenities. They're needed to accommodate the stormwater management part, two parks, and the lots can also accommodate additional landscaping. Park dedication for the project should be paid for this at a rate of $1,300 per unit and $5,000 per acre for the commercial site. Park dedication for the outlot will be assessed at the time it's planted. With that, staff is recommending approval of the plat with the conditions in the staff report. We should amend the second condition regarding park dedication. The applicant would like to preserve the opportunity to talk to the city council regarding reduction of those park dedication requirements. Maybe I can look to the city attorney for language for that. And also recommend approval of design flexibility or dimensional flexibility, excuse me, for the larger lots. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Harlecker. Commission, any questions for Mr. Harlecker? Mr. Brody, your thoughts on changing that, or could we just approve it as it is and leave it for the council to adjust as they may see fit?
Let me think about it for just another second.
All right.
And then I'll, as we get to that point.
All right. Thank you. Does the petitioner wish to add anything at this time on this matter? I believe they're all out in the hall.
Nope, they're sitting right in that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. All right, we do have a public hearing that was continued last month, so I will reopen the public hearing at this time. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak to this particular case, 17-13, the preliminary plat? Anyone wishing to speak to this case? With that, we'll close the public hearing. And Commissioner, your thoughts? Then I guess we'll just have to wait a second here for Mr. Brody.
Honor, what I would propose was for park dedication, as you do set the amount of $1,300 per apartment apartment unit unless otherwise determined by the city council.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Stevenson.
I move that in Planning Case 17-13, we bring approval of the proposed preliminary plat with the conditions stated in the memorandum, including park dedication fees of $1,300 per unit for the apartments and $5,000 per acre for the commercial site unless approved, unless otherwise decided by the council.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Stevenson and second by Knoblock. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
Do we need to reference that kind of addendum at the bottom in Planning Case 17-13 about the design flexibility, dimensional flexibility? Do we need to make that part of the motion?
I will incorporate that into my motion.
And second or agree?
Dimensional flexibility.
Yes. Yes, Senator.
Mr. Harlecker just read it, but it probably needs to be in the language.
Right. All right. So we do still have the motion and the second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Motion carries. This is a recommendation by the planning commission and will be heard by the city council at the July 6th meeting. Our third order of old business, Planning Case 17-12, site plan for the Riverdale Station Apartments, Sherman Associates. Mr. Harlecker.
Yeah, Chair and Commissioners, and this also was continued from last month's meeting. What I can do is go over, summarize what the project is. The applicants are in the audience, and they can go into a little more detail regarding their request for design flexibility and add anything they would like to the presentation. What they are proposing is a site plan that consists of two apartment buildings, an east building at this location here, and a west building on this parcel here. The west building is split in two by a pedestrian connection that ties the project in with the North Star Station. There's a development road that comes in off of Northdale Boulevard at this location, loops through the project, and ties in with the existing station drive. There is also a connection between the development drive and the station drive at this location here. Surface parking is here in the central kind of courtyard area of the east building and out over in this location here of the west building. Underground parking is provided for each building. There are two park areas here, one here, and then a tot lot here. There is a larger park that'll be installed as part of Phase 2 in this location here. Just to the north of these buildings, right along the development drive. Here's more of a... Excuse me, a close-up view of the west building with the road going around it, parking, access into the underground parking at this location here. Out here is the stormwater pond and the connection between the two drives. Sidewalks on either side of the connecting drive as well as internally to the site adjacent to the building. This is the west building. Again, you can see that it's really split into two. You've got these kind of V-shaped or U-shaped building here, and then the L-shaped building at this end. Access to underground parking is here for this building and at the north end of this building here, the center courtyard area and the surface parking. Down here is a proposed commercial site that we can discuss a little bit later. Again, there's sidewalks along Northdale, along the station drive, and internally. They'll have to provide crosswalks wherever the sidewalks cross driveways or streets. Here's the landscape plan. Again, they've got street trees along here. They should also add some around the outside edge here. For this area, they'd be counted towards their open space requirements, which is needed. They'll have to landscape that, and there is a proposed trail that'll loop through here. Maybe add something around the pond and make that more of an amenity so that it can be counted towards open space. Staff is suggesting some sort of maybe prairie plantings and shrubs and some trees around the pond. Playground is here, with trees surrounding it to give it some shade. This is the east plan, again, with street trees along here. Street trees should be added along Northdale Boulevard, and additional foundation plantings should be provided around all of the buildings so that it's covered. Here's the building elevations. This is the west building. You can see it's really, it's a good mix of materials, with different colors also. The units that face the station street have, all have walkouts on both the buildings, and the units facing Northdale also have entrances, exterior entrances directly out. And then those decks are tied in with a sidewalk system with their own sidewalk. This is the other elevation of the west, the west building. Floor plan for the west, the underground parking, and then the units up here. They're a mix of one, two, three vitamin efficiency units. East elevations, again, with the walkout where the access directed to the street along the station street in Northdale. The rest of them have balconies. There are enough breaks in the building and changes in the roof line to break up the building. Here are the other elevations for the east building. Again, this is the corner down here by the commercial building. Again, with the units, it's really a mix of units. In the east building, I believe there's 100 and... On the west building, there's 71 units, and the east building is 181. The elevation of the proposed commercial building right here. It's a once proposed one-story structure, and fits in nicely. Renderings here, these are architectural renderings of the building. This is looking at it from the parking lot near the Northdale Station Street intersection. This is looking at the corner of the west building. And this is the connecting street between the station street and the loop drive. And I'd like to talk a little bit more about the commercial building. Staff and the applicant have been in discussions regarding the layout of the site and traffic movements within the site. Been trying to get a better design for the drive-thru, and we just haven't reached that design that everybody's happy with yet. So we're going to continue working with the applicant on the design of the commercial site. And given that, we've had discussions with the applicant, and they're in agreement that we should... Staff is recommending that the commission move forward with the recommendation of approval for the apartments, the east and west apartments, and move to deny the commercial part of the project. And what they would do is, when they, we'll be working with them to redesign the layout of that commercial site. And when everybody's happy with that redesign, I'll bring it back to the commission, and you'll look at the site plan specifically for that commercial site.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Stevenson.
Sorry to interrupt, but just to have clarity, you've, I think you were just saying that the applicant's on board with this strategy.
Correct.
Denying the commercial space for the moment.
Correct.
Thank you.
And for the commission tonight is a suggested motion. A motion to approve the site plan and a motion to deny the commercial building with findings. Also, there are suggested changes to the conditions of approval and findings for denial. I would like to add one change to condition number four. That references park dedication and insert language that was used for the preliminary plat unless otherwise determined by council.
Mr. Harlecker, is that $3,000 per acre for the commercial site? Is that correct? Because I thought I saw $5,000 at one point.
We had $5,000 on the site plan.
On the preliminary plat.
Yeah, in the plat.
Their last planning case.
Yeah, it's a typo. It should be five.
Mr. Harlecker, then also on page 24 of this piece, it also says $3,000 in the park dedication. It's the same thing.
That's something that's going to have to be clarified. I apologize for that.
And, Mr. Harlecker, one other thing. I did find a typo on the second page of this packet too under the May 18th planning commission meeting in the second full paragraph. I don't think they finished updating the traffic study. I believe that's meant to be finished updating the traffic study, just as long as we're fixing typos.
And with the traffic study, the applicant did provide an updated traffic study. The city engineer and the city's consultant did review that traffic study, and they agree with the conclusions with the traffic study. The engineering department is currently working with the applicant on finalizing the striping that will be needed for, along Northdale for access into that development drive. It won't require additional paving, but it will require a change in the striping for turn lanes.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
Mr. Harlecker, I wanted to go to that traffic plan just to... I looked back at the May 18th minutes, and we were assured at that point that that north development road, that interior road, would be part of Phase 1. Am I correct in thinking that? That was kind of assured to us.
Yep, its traffic engineer is here tonight. I'd like to maybe direct questions regarding the study to Mr. Green.
Members of the commission, my name is Will Anderson, developer with Sherman Associates. Appreciate the opportunity to be here again. The question was in regards to if the north development road would be included in Phase 1. I'm demonstrating on the screen, is this the road that you're referring to?
You can't see it.
You can't see it.
Correct.
This is the road that you're referring to? That's correct. This road will be developed during the first phase of development.
Okay, and so Mr. Harlecker was talking about the striping of Northdale that would have to be amended. But how will this north development road be... How will we, how will they exit the complex? Will it be a right turn out, right turn in?
Scott, do you have a depiction of that, that striping? I believe that...
I don't know. What it is, it allows a full movement coming out, right and left turns, and then a dedicated right turn lane in, and a dedicated left turn in.
And maybe I can hand it off to Bob here, our traffic consultant, just to provide some comments as to how that's an appropriate condition here.
All right. Chair and commissioners, the connections between the site and the parking lot allow access for the site to choose to use the traffic signal or the new intersection. So that should be a good condition where traffic can kind of balance itself out. There'll be a stop sign on the new drive for traffic coming out onto Northdale, and there's a left and a right turn lane. And as they mentioned, we'll redo the striping so that turn bays are formed on Northdale so traffic waiting to turn into the site can get out of the through lane. So with those improvements, that the traffic study showed, that traffic should flow smoothly through there.
And that won't be signalized? It'll just, it'll be the stop sign?
It'll just be the stop sign, yeah. Because it's so close to the other signal, that wouldn't be practical.
Thank you.
I have a question. I don't know if it's for the developer. In our packet, under street design... In our packet, under Street Design, on page two, the first paragraph or the first sentence, "The station area plan reserved space for a possible future street connection to the north." What are we talking about there?
Commissioner, or Chair Schwartz, this area here, between the, the second phase is going to be two buildings. And there's space between the two buildings that's wide enough for if there is some future street connection through there, it could be accommodated. The concept plan that's shown here, it shows a pedestrian connection, but there is room through there if there, at some point in time, there's a public street to the north, they can tie into that.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, to the north is simply the back driveway for the shopping center.
Correct. That's why it's shown at a pedestrian connection at this point.
I see.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Stevenson.
I seem to recall from back, not at our last meeting, but the first time we saw the drawing that was just up on the screen, the concept plan, which was a while back, that there was some conversation about, they were planning in case there was redevelopment of the large shopping center just to the north of this. And so they thought that that could conceivably happen, and they were planning in case that that happened.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Stevenson.
I just have a handful of small questions. Condition thirteen says, "Public art must be included in the project near the station area." Can you, do you have any more information about what's contemplated there?
The code isn't clear as to what that can be. It just requires some sort of public art, whether it be a statue, a fountain, something that draws attention to an area and something that somebody can relate to. It could be a sculpture. It could be something in the paving. It could be a fountain.
Could we, I don't know if the applicant...
Yeah, I can certainly expand on that. This is, this is something that cities and communities typically request in developments that we do, especially where we're trying to create that connection between transit, connection between communities, connection between the development, the new development that we're building here and the community that exists there. We think that installing public art is a real asset and really enhances those connections. And it's something that we're considering, all of those options that Scott referenced, and we're happy to continue discussions with the city as to what exactly is implemented in that space.
Okay, but no, no plans, specific plans?
There are no definitive, specific plans at this point.
Okay. My other questions, these are not so much for going to approval or not, but just, I think for the curiosity of myself and probably people who are watching. If it's, if approval happens today, when do you expect to begin construction? When would you expect to wrap up, open up the...
Fourth quarter of 2017, construction commencement with a sixteen-month construction duration for Phase One. Our development agreement for the second phase, so that the north half of the site, were to commence development of that senior housing piece within three years, I believe, of kind of execution.
Three, three years of execution of the agreement that you guys have already executed with the county?
That's right.
So the clock's, that three-year clock's already...
I believe so. Is that, is that the case? Grant, do you copy?
Mr. Chair, if I can...
Mr. Ferneilles.
I believe it's three years after completion of...
Okay, great. Of Phase One.
Phase One project.
So it's still like four and a half years, huh?
Someplace I saw at the beginning of Phase One.
I too, I thought I saw it at the, at the beginning of Phase One, which would be the fourth quarter of this year, but maybe...
I'm sorry.
Yep. I thought that the generation of Phase Two would start at the three years, the three-year clock would start at the beginning of the construction of Phase One.
I believe, I believe it's the completion of the project.
Okay.
We can certainly clarify that.
And could you please clarify, in this month's packet, the east building shows a hundred and eighty unit building, and last month's packet it showed a hundred and eighty-one.
Typo.
Which is the typo?
It's a hundred and eighty-one units in the east building. Hundred and...
One hundred and eighty units. One hundred and eighty.
Seventy-one and the other.
Last month was the typo. All right. Thank you. Any other questions at this time?
Yes, I have.
Commissioner Stevens.
Scott, is there, like with the driveway between the underground parking and the main building and the parking lot, does there have to be a certain amount of distance between two driveways?
Commissioner Stevens, you're looking at...
The big, the, the big building.
Here?
No, over, over where the underground parking is on the, no, not there.
Underground parking access here?
No, not there, there.
Here?
No.
This one?
Yes. Does there have to be a certain distance between the, well, I, they're not roads, but for the parking?
Well, between this point here...
Yes.
And here and here. No, there isn't. The engineering department did look at the circulation patterns in the project, and they were okay with the layout for the access to the underground parking and their relationship to other drives.
Because I was, my, a suggestion that I just have, and I mean, is, you've got the, the trees there, is there any way to shorten that, so you could put more park? You know, move that drive over a little bit, so then you have more park on the other side? Do you see what I'm saying? Because there's like four trees in there.
Move this drive here?
I don't know, it's not on our screen.
Move this driveway here over that way?
No, here in the wrong apartment complex.
Nope, you're looking at this one right here.
That's all, that's the west building, or the east building.
It's a zoom-in of the building you're looking at.
No, it's not, it's not the, it's down, it's the wrong building that I'm talking about. Where the park is.
Are you talking about the dog run?
This park here?
Well, it says it's a pocket park, and that's what I want to talk about.
Oh, okay.
But, do you see, have you moved the drive over this way to the underground, you'd have more, you'd have a larger pocket park? So I don't know if that's a possibility or not. Because again, from what we had talked about before, is you have, you were talking about using that pocket park as a dog park, and I still, that's just me as the teacher part, but if you're not going to finish Phase, if it is truly maybe four and a half years before you have to start the senior housing, there's that whole park that you said then would be a children's park, then the children are going to have to wait maybe four and a half years to have any play structure, because you'll have just an open area with a dog park. So, and I don't know, from the seniors that we heard, the last two times that we were here, didn't want children playing and noisy in their area, and you're putting a big park right next to the senior center, versus putting a park closer to where children are going to be living, and you have, you have a road between it. So you're going to have kids from the apartment running across the road to get to a big park, and they're not always going to be supervised, because that's just the way, you know, kids go.
Commissioner Stevens, there is a playground over by the west building?
That's a tot lot.
Pardon?
That's a tot lot.
Tot lot, yes.
There's a difference between tots and elementary kids.
Okay.
So I'm just, it's a suggestion because of what we've also heard the last two months about the seniors not wanting all the noisy kids next to their areas, so.
We appreciate that comment, and we can look at, kind of in the interim, how that interior lot, that interior green space, the east building is programmed.
Okay. Just food for thought.
Commissioner, anyone else have any questions at this time?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
I had a question about some of the landscaping as it pertains to Northdale, to the east of the east building. That area is highly bermed, which is a nice screening, that whole section between the stoplight and then this new north road. And I, I thought I heard that there was going to be a sidewalk placed in there somewhere, and I was wondering, is that sidewalk going to be on street level with Northdale? Will it be halfway up the berm or on top of the berm? And then also, where would these overstoryed trees go along there? Would they be atop the berm?
Yeah. Commissioner Stevens, there's going to be quite a bit of grading through here, so that berm is coming down. The exact elevation, this sidewalk here will be done as part of this project, there's also a sidewalk along Northdale. I see the street trees being planted between the new sidewalk and the existing sidewalk.
Okay, the new sidewalk being what's interior to the development? Will there be berming to, at some point? Kind of is there shield?
Not in the conventional sense. Build, they're cutting this down to bring the height of the building down a little bit. There will be some change in grade from the street up to there, but there will be, you know, they've got sidewalks coming down, so it's not going to be a very significant grade change.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Commissioner, any, anyone else with questions right now?
I have one more about bike racks. Do you have any, I mean, I know maybe under the underground parking for where people, you know, maybe they live there, but if people are visiting, are there any bike racks available on the premise at all?
Our intention is to include bike racks for both buildings, east and west.
Okay, do you have an idea of where they might be located?
We have them located next to the public entries of the building.
Okay.
So they'd be adjacent to the patio that we're providing to the residents and the front entry as well.
Okay.
There may be more opportunities to find other locations for bike racks, but the decision to include them was part of our discussions we had with the LCDA council in making a walkable, likable community.
Right. So does that need to be added as a condition, just to...
They're on, they're on here. There's two in the middle pictures, sorry. Yes, in the...
Oh, there it is, okay.
There's two of them.
There it is.
Exactly where you discussed.
Set, okay. Thank you.
All right. We continued the public hearing last month, so at this time I will reopen the public hearing on Plan A case seventeen dash twelve. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak to this case? Anyone wishing to speak to this case? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And commission, further discussion? Commissioner Stevenson.
I'm really excited about this project. I think it's a phenomenal addition to our city. I've been taking the North Star into work for the last few weeks because of the extensive construction on ninety-four and two fifty-two, and so I've been spending a lot of time in that area, and I look over there almost every day and imagine what it'll be like with this building, and it's exciting, because I think it's really going to be a great asset for our community. I'm, I'm very excited about it. I'm pleased also with the degree of cooperation between the applicant and the city about the various landscaping issues, but also around the commercial site, and the applicant's continued willingness to work with the city to try and resolve that drive-through issue, because I tend to agree that it doesn't really make a lot of sense the way it looks right now, and so I'm pleased that we're not, that that's going to continue to be worked on. So I'm ready to make a motion if no one else has...
Can I add that we maybe have them look at the park situation, just as a condition for eighteen? To, you know, just make sure that there's some play structures or something in there for the apartment kids? Or, you know, like they had said, that they would do due diligence to look at, look at it a little bit more with the city. I just...
Just to add on to, I, I think, I'm, I'm really happy with the plans. I think, I'm, I'm very appreciative that the applicant has come with such great detail, down to the bike racks, the placement of the parks, everything. I think it makes our job a lot easier, and while I, I respect the request to relook at the, the plans a little bit for accommodating a, a play area, you know, the city Conrappis has a number of parks. While it may not be on the site specifically, I don't want it to delay anything with the plans and having to relook at this and get new approvals and so forth, but if there can be something, I guess, that's simple, I would support that, but I don't know if I want to make another condition.
To work with, you know, I just, like he said, he, he said that he would take due diligence and look at it, just so that it's out there. Yes, there are parks, but there aren't, I don't know if there's one that's really, you know, a lot of the apartments have play structures and things like that in them, so...
I, yeah. Chair Schwartz, I tend to agree in principle, but I think with the question on the table and the motion or condition for the changes with the commercial property, I think we need, I think enough effort has been made as we've, as Chair, as Schmalki has announced, mentioned, but with the bike racks and play, there's going to require some design flexibility as is, and going into the future, minor flexibility. So I don't think we should add beyond what we currently have in front of us, which is, you know, no, no plan is perfect, but this is, checks all the boxes and is very close to being a best-of-breed kind of plan in front of us. So I, I propose that we vote on it as is. With some of the editing for some of the numerical errors, and I think we have to mention the motion for the commercial addendum, but, or is that going to be separate? I guess that's a question.
Yeah. Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Stevenson.
Why, and I, what I would propose is that, that I would make a motion at this time, and I'll do that in just a second. It would be to do everything as one motion, because that's what staff is recommending in this. My proposal would be that we can leave out the, the condition about the playground. They did say they would consider it. I don't know that a condition is going to really, since the condition wouldn't be to require that they add playground equipment, but rather if they consider adding playground equipment, I'm not sure that adding a condition really forces them to do anything at all anyway. That would be my point, but...
I just didn't want it to get lost in the show.
Right, I understand. So I'll move, in Plan A case seventeen dash twelve, that we approve the site plan and the use of design and dimensional flexibility for the east and west apartment buildings with the seventeen conditions that are listed in the staff report, the four findings for flexibility with the following corrections. As to number four, that the amount per acre for commercial site be changed from 3,000 to 5,000, and that the entire condition number four be subject to, if it's otherwise determined by the city council, that the park dedication fee should be changed.
Second...
Hold on.
He's not done.
I'm not done. I'll further move to deny the, as part of the motion, further move to deny the site plan for the commercial building based on the following findings, that the design of the drive-through is confusing and difficult to maneuver, the radi of the turn will be problematic for larger vehicles, the crosswalk is challenging location at the intersection of cars going into and out of the drive-through, would insert pedestrians and conflicting vehicle turning movements, and there's no allowance for vehicles to bypass the drive-through once they're in the queue.
Chair Schwartz, I have a motion or for, point of information or point for clarification?
Commissioner Knoblock.
Before we vote on the motion?
Well, we haven't had a second yet, anyway.
Well, I was going to second it if I can get clarification. The clarification is, what is the timeframe, timeframe for the development of alternatives for the commercial retail with the developer?
Commissioner Knoblock, at this point, it's, it's really up to the developer, that's why we get it this way.
Okay.
Just to make sure that, you know, they're, they're working on tenants, and they're also working on redesigning it, so we wanted to have some flexibility in order to get them, give them time to redesign it and not have it tied into a specific date. So we wanted to have some flexibility in order to get them, give them time to redesign it and not have it tied into a specific date.
I'm satisfied, Chair Schwartz. Now can we move on to the motion? I second if there's nothing else to be added to the motion.
All right, we have a motion by Stevenson and a second by Knoblock. Commissioner Schwartz? Commissioner, Mr. Harlecker.
On that park dedication amount, maybe a city attorney could help with this. What I would like to see maybe instead of a dollar amount there for the commercial, since it's, maybe we could add language that and park dedication for the commercial site shall be paid per, per city code. That way. So that would be an easier way than trying to verify it after the fact, I guess.
This is the wording that we approved on the preliminary plat.
Correct, the preliminary plat also goes to council. So there, if, if there's a mix-up in the, in the dollar amount, it can be corrected at the city council.
This is the decision of the.
At this, this is the final decision.
Mr. Brody.
I'm going to rephrase the question so I can think about it. So what we're concerned about, if I'm understanding, Mr. Harlecker, is that if you made, the final plat is going to go to the council, it may, that amount may get changed, but we're approving sort of a set amount here. That becomes then a condition. I would, I still think that we've added the language that, or is driven by the city.
I actually think that the concern is slightly different, which is that it's not that if the council decides to change it.
Is if the five thousand is wrong.
And if the, so if the five thousand is wrong, it's three thousand. It says five thousand here, and the council decides not to change it, then they're overpaying, I guess.
And I guess my concern being then we've just approved a.
Right.
A preliminary plat or a plat with the five thousand amount. And so either way, we're sort of. If clearly we've done something that's contrary to our code, a dollar amount is incorrect, I think we could correct that amount. I'd say we leave the motion as is. It's consistent with the motion that we had and what we approved in the prior agreement. For some reason, if staff was interpreted improperly or incorrectly, I think we can make that, we can make that change administratively because it would be something we couldn't, we couldn't impose five thousand dollars if our code doesn't provide for it. So that would be my suggestion, given we've already made that approval in the previous item.
Mr. Harlecker, are you satisfied with that?
I'm satisfied.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Franklin.
Someplace, I'm sure I read that the, at the start of phase one, three years after that would be the start of phase two. So there's a, there's a mix-up, there's someplace in there. It's a three years from the beginning of phase one.
Mr. Chair, I can, I can try and clarify that.
Mr. Fornelius.
So we did, we did check the, there's actually several different agreements that we've entered into between the city and the developer and the city and the, I don't know, county regional authority. The purchase agreement states that the developer will purchase the property from the city for the, so that's phase two, within three years of the closing on phase one. So our purchase agreement that we just amended recently contemplates that the developer can actually take until the end of this year to, to buy the property. I think their plan is to purchase phase one from the city in October of, of this year. So that, if that were to happen, then it would be three years after that date that they'd have to buy the north half of the property. Now, we also have a memorandum of understanding, which I guess I can't read it from here, that states that the, now this is between, I believe, the city and the county.
No, the city and Sherman.
The, the city and Sherman. So there was a, there was also a memorandum of understanding that we had executed prior to the purchase agreement, which stated that phase two would commence by June thirtieth of 2020 and be completed by December thirty-first of 2022. Now again, that's a memorandum of understanding. I think we need to work out the specific details. The purchase agreement states that they have three years to buy the property from the phase one closing. So we're talking the timeframes that we've, we've discussed earlier.
Thank you. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmalki.
To be specific, just for, I guess, myself and, and our listeners. So are we changing the park dedication fee for the, per acre to five thousand on this motion? Or are we leaving it at the three thousand and letting it be reconciled?
Thirteen per apartment unit and five thousand per acre.
We're making it five thousand in the motion.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. This is a decision by the planning commission and can be appealed to the city council within ten days if someone so chooses. Congratulations and good luck. All right, moving on to new business. Our first case here is planning case seventeen dash fifteen. A preliminary plat for Riverdale Common Sixth Edition, three five five zero, one hundred twenty-fourth Avenue, Amcon. Mr. Harlecker.
Yeah, Chair and Commissioners. This item is being continued to the July twentieth meeting. We're working on traffic issues associated with this project. We're recommending that the public hearing be opened and continued to the July twentieth meeting and action on this item be postponed to the same date.
All right, so you want to actually give any presentation at all, just open the public hearing?
Well, I can give a brief summary of, of what's being proposed. The applicant, Amcon, is proposing to construct a, two retail buildings out in front of the Home Depot building out on the, I would call it the north end of their parking lot, out by the one hundred and twenty-fourth. In doing that, they're also proposing a plat of the property. Home Depot will be on one lot and one of the retail buildings will be on one lot and the other retail building will be on the other lot. They, Home Depot has a lot of excess land and excess parking and they're looking to redevelop that with about a seven thousand eight, seven thousand square foot retail building and about eight thousand square foot retail building out on the fringes of their parking lot along one hundred and twenty-fourth.
Thank you. All right, at this time I will open a public hearing in Plan A case seventeen dash fifteen. A preliminary plat for Riverdale Common Sixth Edition, three five five zero, one hundred twenty-fourth Avenue, Amcon. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak to this matter tonight? Sir, step up to the microphone, give us your name and your address, please. And please try to limit your comments to five minutes.
Yes, I'm already at so, living at thirty-six twenty-eight, one hundred and twenty-second circle, Coon Rapids. It's just across the river track, across the divide from this area. I guess I would just ask the planning commission and the council to explain a little more detail what the structure that is going to be. And as I understand it, this is the northwest corner of the present Home Depot parking lot across, say, from the Old Country Buffet and Battery. I forget what the name of the.
Correct.
And what portion of the parking lot would that take up? I mean, how big a structure would it be? And just give us a little more detail so we know how big a building and what the activities would be around there if we could do that.
Mr. Harlecker, do you have any of that information?
The buildings will be butted up against one hundred and twenty-fourth Avenue. Way up, way up by the street. That's, that's the street that goes between the Home Depot parking lot.
And the gas.
And the gas station. So it'll be butted up against that. Two one-story commercial buildings, one about seven thousand square feet, the other about eight thousand square feet. Pretty much right next to each other, and there'll be a kind of a courtyard in between them. None of the, at this point, the access out of Home Depot isn't going to be changing. Traffic will be directed out. Most of it will go out to one hundred and twenty-fourth and that service drive that comes in to feed Home Depot. So that's where, that's where the activity is going to take place. Nothing is being proposed back on the, the south or west side of the Home Depot site.
Okay.
All of it's out front by the Super America Building out that way.
What kind of building, what kind of business would these be?
At this point, it hasn't been determined. It's be a mix of, of smaller retail uses, possibly a couple of restaurants.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here for a public hearing on this matter? All right, then at this time we will continue the public hearing to our July twentieth meeting. Commission. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmalki.
In Plan A case seventeen dash fifteen, we'll recommend the public hearing be opened and continued to July twentieth meeting and action on this item be postponed to the same date.
Second.
Motion by Schmalki, second by Casey. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This case is continued. Our next case is planning case seventeen dash sixteen. The site plan for two retail buildings at three five five zero, one hundred twenty-fourth Avenue, Amcon. Mr. Harlecker.
Again, planning, planning commission and Chair Schwartz. Staff is recommending that the public hearing be opened and continued to the July twentieth commission meeting and postpone action on the site plan that's associated with the preliminary plat to the same date.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Stevenson.
Mr. Harlecker, I, in looking at the materials for this item, I noticed a, a draft site plan. I noticed there's no landscape plan. And looking at the site plan, I don't see any landscaping activities in terms of trees or bushes or anything like that. I don't know if that's a requirement for the, the development in this area. Can you speak at all to whether that is required and whether there will be a landscape plan forthcoming?
Yeah, Commissioner Stevens, there, there will be a landscape plan. They will have to meet current code requirements for landscaping, stormwater management, everything that the current code requires.
Okay, and they just haven't submitted that yet, that's why it wasn't in?
Yeah, that's one of, you know, that's one of the reasons why it was postponed.
Gotcha, thank you.
All right, at this time I will open a public hearing in Plan A case seventeen dash sixteen. The site plan for two retail buildings at three five five zero, one twenty-fourth Avenue, Amcon. Anyone here wishing to speak on this matter? Anyone wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we will then continue the public hearing to next month's meeting. And commission, motion please.
Mr. Commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmalki.
In Plan A case seventeen dash sixteen, we'll open the public hearing, continue it to the July twentieth commission meeting and postpone the action on this item to the same meeting.
Second.
Motion by Schmalki, second by Casey. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? This case is also continued to July twentieth. All right, next we have planning case seventeen dash fourteen. A home occupation permit for eyelash extension service at two eight four one, one hundred thirteenth lane. I'll probably murder the name here, so I'll just leave it as is. Mr. Harlecker.
Yes, Chair Schwartz and Commissioners. The property is located on one hundred fifteenth lane, in this area here. And this is Crooked Lake Boulevard to the east and Gladiola to the west. It's highlighted here, outlined in, with a black highlight. You see the site plan with the single-family residents, you know, traditional single-family, one-story residence with a garage and the driveway going out. What the applicant is proposing is an eyelash extension service as a home occupation permit. The applicant is proposing to use a room in the lower level, right here, to conduct business. She'll be operating by appointment only, Sunday through Saturday. There'll be one client at a time. She anticipates one to four clients per day. There is sufficient space in the driveway for the clients to park. The proposed home occupation does comply with the requirements of the home occupation permit. The hours be about twenty-seven hours per week. They will vary by what day. She's proposing nine to eight on Tuesday, nine AM to eight PM Tuesday. Wednesday, four to eight PM. Friday, three PM to eight PM. Saturday, nine AM to two PM. And Sunday, six PM to eight PM. And the hours do comply with the requirements, not to start before nine AM or extend after eight PM. With that, staff is recommending approval of the home occupation permit with the conditions that the hours be limited to nine AM to eight PM. Excuse me, a maximum of thirty hours per week. All vehicles associated with a home occupation are parked at the driveway, compliance with Title XI city, city code of City of Coon Rapids. And the applicant receive all necessary building permits for any construction needed to accommodate the home occupation. I believe the occupant or the applicant is in the audience tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Harlecker. Commission, any questions from Mr. Harlecker?
I'm the chair.
Commissioner Stevenson.
The narrative mentions, and you just mentioned that the applicant tends to have one customer at a time. I know in other home occupation permits, we've made that a condition of approval. It's not listed as a condition in the staff report. I'm just wondering if that's, if there's, if there's a reason for that, or?
No, it's, it's, we could certainly add it as a condition.
Okay.
Anyone else? All right, we have a public hearing on this matter, so at this time I will open a public hearing in Plan A case seventeen dash fourteen, a home occupation permit. Anyone wishing to speak to this matter? Anyone wishing to speak on this matter? Hearing none, close the public hearing. Is there anything the petitioner would like to add? No? All right, commission.
In Plan A case seventeen dash fourteen, I recommend approval of the home occupation permit with the following conditions that Mr. Harlecker read, plus adding number six, that she does one client at a time in the home.
Second.
Motion by Stevens, second by Stevenson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. This is a decision by the planning commission and can be appealed to the city council within ten days if anyone so chooses. Otherwise, congratulations and good luck. All right, moving on, we have seventeen. Plan A case seventeen dash nineteen. Site plan for a parking lot expansion at Hamilton Elementary School, one three seven four, one hundred eleventh Avenue. Mr. Harlecker.
Yeah, Commissioner and Chair, the applicant is proposing to add the parking lot, expand the parking lot into this location here at the Hamilton School. This is Avacet, one hundred eleventh. And here's City Hall, Coon Creek over here. Right now, there's, there's really not much over there. There's a track here and a baseball field down here. And what's being proposed is a linear parking lot. Again, that's with the Adams School. And this is really being generated by the need to add drop-off. And this is really being generated by the need to add drop-off spaces and pickup spaces for students. And they are adding parking spaces here, add additional parking. Access will come in off of Avacet, or off of, from in front of the school too. It's one-way going through and then out onto Avacet. This access point here kind of lines up in about this location here. And that's undeveloped land right across the street. So those headlights aren't shining directly into houses. And they are proposing six overstory trees along the street here. City engineering has looked at it, and they had some minor comments regarding stormwater management that can be addressed. With that, there's currently a couple dumpsters that are parked out the front. The school district has worked with the city on relocating those dumpsters to the western side of the school property and in a dumpster enclosure that complies with City Code. With that, staff is recommending approval of the plan with the following conditions. New landscape areas be irrigated, and project complies with Title 11. Grading and drainage plans be signed off by the engineering department, and all engineering comments be addressed. Dumpsters be moved and relocated elsewhere in a less conspicuous location with an enclosure per City Code. Lighting must be directed away from Avacet, and the applicant enter into a site security agreement with the city. I'm afraid I'll answer any questions, and the applicant is in the audience.
Thank you, Mr. Harlecker. Any questions? Commission for Mr. Harlecker.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Stevenson.
Yeah, this is probably a better question more for the applicant than for Mr. Harlecker. Because this one, I mean, I don't, I don't really understand what's going on here because there's a huge area for drop-off already at this site. And so, I mean, it's their property, and they understand the needs, but it's just puzzling to me why they're adding more drop-off spots when they have this huge thing and they're losing their track in order to do it.
Yeah. We do have a representative from the school district here today.
Yeah, I mean, you know, more out of curiosity than anything else.
Hello, I'm Steve Anderson, Director of Buildings and Grounds, 2727 North Ferry Street. The rationale is that we have, bus pickup is the area that you're referring to, and we currently have buses in that area. We try to separate the parents' pickup and drop-off from the buses. The problem that we have currently at Hamilton is that the parent pickup backs up out onto 111th. And we have to put staff out on 111th to manage not only the students, but sometimes the parents that are coming and going because they're currently parking in the city parking lot and then asking students to cross 111th while there are cars backed up from, through our parking lot down by the sidewalk. Because currently, what happens is cars come in off of 111th, they go through the parking lot, and then they come down and they exit down on Avacet. And what we're finding is that we don't have enough space for all of the parent pickup and drop-off. And it really is more of an issue when they're picking up in the afternoon.
Thank you.
Commission, any other questions at this time?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Casey.
I thought I read that there'll be an addition of, is it 11 new parking spaces? Or 13, maybe? Is that, does that have an impact, that, those few, or just the location?
It does have an impact because one of the things that have happened, we've added some additional staff to the building in the mental health areas. And we have several staff that come and go. The classroom and the support staff currently take up a lot of the parking, and we don't have much space for visitors. So last fall, we actually opened up some spaces along the front of the building, and I think it was nine that we created there because we were full in the parking lot and nowhere to go. So it really does help. It's not significant, but we're also trying to keep as much of the green space as we possibly can for the kids.
I'll ask additional question. Is this, these striped areas for the new parking spaces, is that closest to the front entrance of the school?
It's over this location here. And the front of the school is right here.
It's east of the front entrance.
Okay. The front entrance, is that, I'm just looking at the drawings here.
Looking at the drawing, the front entrance is up there.
Is up here, okay. I was just checking this, okay. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Harlecker?
Yeah.
You mentioned, I apologize for not remembering specifically what you said here, but in regards to the dumpsters, you said that they're going to be working with whom again on the placement or the relocation of the dumpsters?
They'll be working with city staff. Actually, we met with them today, with a tentative location over here near the bend in the road.
Okay.
And that will give it a more secluded area. It won't be front and center like it is here.
Okay.
And allow them space to put in an enclosure that meets City Code.
So that's great. The one question or recommendation I was going to make then, because I do think that the condition is a little bit ambiguous, to just say less conspicuous location, could we maybe change that somehow so that it does state that, you know, the dumpsters will be removed and relocated elsewhere based on city staff recommendation? Just something to show that who's in the decision-making process.
I think that would be fine.
Great, thank you.
All right, Commission, any other questions at this time? All right, we have a public hearing in this matter, so we'll open a public hearing in Planning Case 17-19, the site plan for the parking lot expansion at Hamilton Elementary School. Anyone here to speak to this matter? Please come up to the microphone, state your name and address. Limit your comments to five minutes, please.
Good evening. Brenda Shimo Smith, 11045 Avacet Street. And we live across the street, there's a couple other neighbors here too. We're happy to see more parking added. We are concerned about if they remove the track, is their track going to be relocated? And will it cut into the woods? That creates kind of a privacy boundary between that and the residential area. Mainly because we're very concerned about the water check because it's a high-water table in that area. And we already have enough water issues after all our storms recently. So we don't need any more that's dumped out to that side street there on Avacet Street.
Jay Palmeroy with Anderson Johnson Associates. We're actually keeping the track. We're actually going to run the, they'll close off the parking lot. There's actually gates at the north end where that'll be closed off during the school day, and the kids can actually still run on the track. They'll go down a surmountable curb on both sides of the new parking lot and drive and back around. So we're not going to relocate the track, we're actually keeping it as is.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Stevenson.
I'm sorry, did I, so you're going to have them run through the parking lot, is what you're having them do?
Mm-hmm. It's a little unique.
On asphalt?
The track is asphalt now.
Okay.
And they will actually, will depress the curb, so it'll be a surmountable curb where they run over the sidewalk, across the drive, on the track, across the drive, and down. So on a lot of schools, we'll actually develop, most cases, it's bus corrals, but in this case, it's a parking lot where it's closed off during the day, and it's a hard-surface play area for the kids. So it's kind of a dual function. So it'll be open in the morning for drop-off, closed during the day, open in the afternoon for parent pickup.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Casey.
So is this where those vehicle gates come in? That we got, we got a kind of a design picture?
At the north, at the north end of the new drive, yes.
And then at the other end?
No.
There won't be, so how do you close that off?
It's a one-way traffic. There'll be a sign, or signs at the end that say, "Do not enter."
Okay, but when you say you're going to utilize the track and that it would be closed off during the day when that's happening? So you have a gate at one end, but not at the other?
It's one-way traffic, so where the traffic is able to enter, we'll close that off. At the other end, it's an exit only.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Daniel Anderson, 1281 109th Avenue, Northwest of Queen Rapids. I just wanted to gain a little clarification as well that the wooded area that separates the houses and the school would not be touched. I know that the school does own that land, but that butts up against my land as well. We're new, we just moved in last October, and the main reason why we bought the property was because of the wooded area. And we do know that there are a lot of species that use that area that are protected species. So we wanted to make sure that we weren't losing any habitat or having any kind of a, that wooded area being taken down.
Okay, Chair Schwartz?
No, that area's not going to be impacted by this project.
Excellent, thank you.
Anyone else for the public hearing? Please come up to the microphone, state your name and address, please.
I'm Jody Johnston, I'm at 11075 Avacet Street. My driveway is directly across from the current driveway to the parking lot at the school on Avacet. And I'm wondering what's going to happen to the existing access to Avacet from their parking lot?
See, you're right here.
Yeah, I'm right across the street.
Right there.
Yeah.
I'll try to answer that for you. At this point, I don't believe they're doing any changes to that access there. What they're proposing is all internal to the site, right here. And here's the driveway that comes out onto Avacet. So that's staying the same.
And they're creating a new?
And then another access point down here, which really lines up about right here with that vacant piece right in there.
Okay. I was concerned because I get the traffic all the time in the afternoon, and it was kind of crazy a few years ago with traffic on both sides of the street and kids running across the street. So I don't want to have that kind of stuff happening again. So this is, this sounds like a good solution to the whole pickup in the afternoon problem too, with traffic.
Mm-hmm, that's what it's intended to help alleviate.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for the public hearing? Seeing done, we'll close the public hearing. Commission?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmokey.
In Planning Case 17-19, I recommend that we approve the site plan with the following conditions. That the new landscape areas be irrigated, the project complies with Title 11, grading and drainage plans be signed off by the engineering department, and all engineering comments be addressed. The dumpsters be removed and relocated elsewhere in some language to specify who they'll be working with to define that location in accordance with the City Code. And then lighting must be directed away from the residence on Advocate Street, and the applicant must enter into a site security agreement with the city.
Second.
Motion by Schmokey, second by Stevens. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post? The motion carries, it's a decision by the Planning Commission and can be appealed to the City Council within 10 days if someone so chooses. There you go. Build your parking lot.
Parking lots.
All right. Planning Case 17-17. An amendment to Gateway Commerce Center Planned Unit Development H&amp;W LLC. Mr. Harlecker.
Yes, Chair and Commissioners. The applicant is before the Commission tonight with an amendment to the PUD to allow the construction of a second auto dealership on this property here. Be on both sides of Gateway Drive, just south and west of McDonald's. This piece down here is currently owned by Walser. They have not submitted any development plans for their property yet. And then the remaining property along Gateway Drive is the subject of tonight's discussion for the PUD amendment to allow the second car dealership. A little background, back in April of 2015, City Council approved the amendment to the PUD to allow a car dealership, a swim center, and greater flexibility on the remaining undeveloped lots. The following year, in June 2016, the city approved an amendment to the PUD to add additional land to the auto dealership. That's the current configuration. The size was increased from six to 10 acres with the addition of the swim center property. One of the conditions of that approval was there'd be only one new car dealership in the PUD. It resulted in the following uses. The car dealership on lots one, two, and three. A hotel on lot four, which would be right in here. Retail restaurant on lot five. Retail restaurant on lot six. And then a hotel, retail, or office on this parcel here, lot seven. What's being proposed here is the redevelopment, or the development of the two parcels on the north and west side of Gateway Drive. That will be the location for the dealership's automobile inventory. This area here will be the proposed dealership building with some associated parking. This lot here is 5.5 acres, and this lot here is 5.76 acres. The proposed PUD does not really change, it does not change the configuration of the street. What it does is combine the two lots here into one lot, and the two lots here and an outlot that is next to McDonald's into another parcel. The site layout, as you can see here, this is the inventory lot with an access point here and here with the dealership here with access at this point here and here. There's a sidewalk along this side of the street, extends to here, then it'll cross over and continue on to the McDonald's site. There's a proposed dumpster location back in this corner. It's a very prominent location on site, and staff is recommending that the dumpster be moved in closer to the building to a less conspicuous location. Car display pads should be set back a minimum 10 feet. They are proposing one here, one here. And I don't think there are any over on this lot here. Building design, specific design for the building will be included as part of the site plan review. It'll have to comply with PUD design guidelines. The building is located such that the main entrance faces this direction here, kind of towards the highway. And there are perspectives that were attached, and we can look at them in a moment, showing what that building will look like from various locations. Landscaping, the landscaping plan is consistent with the current plan. They've got the trees on both sides of Gateway Drive on the landscaped islands here and along back, and then also a mix of trees along the back property line here. along back, and then also a mix of trees along the back property line here. Along here, they've also got shrubs in addition to the overstory trees to provide a nice buffer between the parking and the Gateway Drive. Staff is recommending that additional trees be planted across here, here, and right in through here. This is really the working area of the building, and it's a very prominent location relative to Hanson Boulevard, and additional overstory trees along there would still allow the building to be visible, but would soften the building. Signage, the original PUD included two large signs. The design standards allowed for a maximum 28-foot-high, 14-foot-wide monument sign. One was to be allocated for the hotel, another one was going to be allocated for an overall development sign. As an option, that should be considered. Both of these dealerships are going to want larger signs, and staff is suggesting that this dealership here, as well as the Walser property, each get one of those taller signs. And then that would, the Walser would get the hotel sign, and the dealership here would get the one that was allocated for the development. The signs would have to comply with the design standards in the PUD agreement. This applicant is also looking for a smaller tenant sign, one for this building here, and another to identify the inventory parking lot. Those signs are 10 feet wide and 8 feet tall, in our monument style. Site grading and drainage will be addressed at the time of site plan review. The applicant did submit an updated traffic analysis as part of this project. The proposed mix of uses actually reduces the number of trips generated overall, generated by this project. Here's the view from the street, taken from right in here. That's just a general idea of what the building might look like. That's what it would look like from the street. This would be what it would look like from the ramp going down onto Highway 10. This is the area here where maybe some additional trees would help soften the backside of the building. This is what it would look like from the, closer to the entrance of the overpass and Hanson Boulevard. As you can see, it really, the service area of the building could be softened by overstory trees along and through here. And then this is what the building will look like from Highway 10. With that, staff is recommending approval of the proposed PUD amendment with the 11 conditions in the staff report, and the applicant is here also wanting to give a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Harlecker. Commission, any questions of Mr. Harlecker before we have the petitioners come up? All right, if you'd come up and make a presentation?
Thank you for the opportunity to allow us to present on this new project. We, I haven't met all of you, we've been here in the past, obviously, and I'm, my name's Jonathan Adam, and with Silverstone Realty, I'm also the representative for H&amp;W Development for the Gateway Commerce Center. We have, we're fortunate enough to have a new Honda dealership that's entering into Coon Rapids and has selected this site for that entrance. So the new owner of that franchise is here tonight. Honda goes through an 18-month process to select their franchise owners. Mr. Sutton has been awarded that franchise, and he can give you more details about that. So we're requesting that the PUD be amended for the second dealership. Walser will do their own dealership. This is separate from anything that was done in the past, and that's why we're requesting a second dealership, because Honda has been awarded to a franchise owner for Coon Rapids, and this is an opportunity for Coon Rapids to have this new Honda dealership. This is one of the few, if not only, sites in Coon Rapids that'll actually facilitate this new dealership based on radius searches of other Honda dealerships in the Twin Cities area. So those are some things to consider. Other things on the recommendations that Mr. Harlecker pointed out, we have reviewed all those, and we are in agreeance with all of those 11 recommendations, so we have no problem adding all those into this PUD. And we've already looked at the dumpster enclosure and moving that into the building rather than having it in its own location, as Mr. Harlecker had mentioned. So happy to take further questions, and then I'd like to introduce Mr. Sutton, and he's gonna tell you more about his background in the Honda dealership.
So, hi. So quiet. I'm Nate Sutton, and my wife is here tonight also, Mallory. So we are currently Honda dealers in Kenosha, Wisconsin, and we've also been Ford dealers in Matteson, Illinois, which is about 30 miles south of Chicago. So we are expanding to Minneapolis, Coon Rapids, as I mentioned. The facility shown is about 50,000 square feet, and will employ about 150 people. So our other dealerships, the Ford dealership employs around 110, and the Honda store in Kenosha, Wisconsin, has around 75 team members. So, and we've been dealers 27 years. We like to think we know what we're doing, went through a very long vigorous process with Honda to earn the right to come to Coon Rapids, and we're excited. Thank you.
Thank you. Commission, any questions for the petitioners? Oh, go ahead.
I see you saw the picture of the store there, so that's the same picture that you have.
Commission, any questions for the petitioner? All right, we may get back to you here in a few minutes. Thank you. All right, at this time, I will open a public hearing in Planning Case 17-17, an amendment to Gateway Commerce Center Planned Unit Development. Anyone here wishing to speak to this matter? Anyone wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Commission?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Stevenson.
Well, I'm not gonna bury the lead here. I'm adamantly opposed to this amendment. And I'll start by saying, Mr. Sutton, I thank you for being here today, and what I'm about to say actually has very little to do with you. I'm really irritated at the developer for bringing us this proposal. When we were here a year ago talking about this plan, about the last amendment, which I also opposed, to be very clear, it was done with the condition that this not happen. And we're here one year later, and they're doing exactly what we said then not to do. The developer's not taking the city at its word, and they're not dealing with us in good faith. I think that, I disagree with the staff report, which says that this doesn't change the basic configuration of the PUD. I can't imagine a more, a larger change to the configuration of the PUD other than possibly moving the street, because that's the only thing that stays the same between the PUD before and after for these blocks. The amendment erases four separate uses within the PUD, all in pursuit of an auto dealership when there's already an auto dealership in the PUD. I recall either in '15 or '16, having a long discussion in this commission about how any further changes to the PUD we wanted to see done comprehensively. And we asked the applicant, "Look, take a comprehensive look at this PUD," and the applicant just refused to do that. We said we didn't want piecemeal, one after another, uses changed, and that's exactly what they've done. Again, we said we wanted varied development in this, and that was the purpose of having a planned unit development, to make sure there weren't monolithic use. That's exactly what's proposed here. And I also think this is a very visible site in the city, and now it's going to be reduced to a series of parking lots. I think this is not appropriate. I think that the developer is being disrespectful to the city and to this commission, and I would strongly urge my colleagues on the commission to vote against this proposal.
I concur.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yep. I've been on the planning commission for about 10 years, and when this whole area was brought up to us, I mean, there was gonna be lots of different uses in there, and I know that, they say that they've tried to do diligence with trying to find other things because originally there was supposed to be a bank on it, on the area, and now they said they couldn't find a bank that large, and so we've moved things around in that whole area, but nothing has ever come back to us saying this is what the whole thing is gonna look like. The swim center didn't go in. We were excited about some different uses out there. I live a half a mile from here, on this area, and I was excited about different stuff going in there. We're gonna be a Roseville with car dealerships all along Highway 10. I don't want Coon Rapids to look like that, but, you know, that's, I guess, up to the council and the rest of the commission, if that's what they so choose. But I'm gonna vote against it.
Chair Schwartz. Commissioner Noblock?
I agree with my two fellow commissioners, but I need to provide a little, my perspective of it is, is that, kind of in a little bit of a defense of Mr. Sutton, and I hope he has the opportunity to come up and to have a little bit of a rebuttal to some of the concerns that have been placed in front here. But in a business development sense, I think they have made attempts, and I think taking into consideration the history of this parcel of land, with its proximity to the Coon Creek watershed, I would have preferred ideally to that entire area to be undeveloped. But that is my personal choice, and that's not the reality of the situation. So there is land to be developed. I think there is, there are some concerns to it, but I think the effort is being placed to make it as accommodating as possible or feasible, and I think it is a difficult decision, but it's a good business decision, and I think it's a very good decision for Coon Rapids. And I disagree that, I don't think we will be a Roseville, because there's a lot of different elements involved with Roseville, with their street work and their market mix, and I think we've made enough accommodations with the recommendations points to minimize that appearance or outlook. So I just question in the commissioners, vote your conscience, vote your way, but I would recommend to keep one word, and that is the reality of the situation. The proposal of the Honda dealership is a very viable, a very strong business opportunity for Coon Rapids, and I respectfully disagree with some of the concerns, but everyone has their, that's why we're on this commission, is to provide all our perspectives, to provide the best possible decision. So my only last thing in my rambling is that if Mr. Sutton wishes to make a rebuttal or to have, to add any further information to our concerns, that he'd perhaps be allowed to come forward.
Thank you.
If he wishes or desires to.
Thank you.
I would vote for it, if anyone.
Commissioner Schmokey?
So I'd like to echo Commissioner Noblock. I do empathize with my co-chair, or my co-commissioners here in terms of some of their disappointment, but I do think that this has been one of those projects that has been going on for an extremely long period of time. There has been an awful lot of effort to bring forward the businesses that were in the original PUD, those recommendations. I think that this is a really good proposal. I think it brings a lot of great job opportunities for the city of Coon Rapids, which nobody has mentioned yet, so it's not to repeat what Mr. Noblock has already covered. But, you know, I think it, what they're bringing forward for the structure and with all the landscaping, they're really, I think, doing a good job at trying to also preserve some of the natural appearance of that area, which I really am pleased with. I too am, kind of hate to see a barrier to block some of that natural landscaping, it's the only disappointment I have, but I think what they're proposing is actually going to be quite a compliment to that, and isn't gonna take away from that. I echo again the disappointment, but I think that there's a lot of pluses here that just really need to be considered, considering the amount of time, and so for that, I'm going to support this.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Stevenson?
I just want to rebut one thing that's been said here about a lot of effort going in, because last year, the developer told us that the other uses that were proposed were still viable, okay? They told us that they anticipated that they would be able to do those things a year ago. It's not, this is not something that's been sitting for five or 10 years where they, you know, they thought that, they could have done it a long time ago, but they tried for a really long time, and they couldn't do it, it's been a year. I think that, I just, I don't agree with that characterization.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey?
I'll throw my two cents in too. We have this 10-year history of this plot as a PUD with the developer, and Mr. Sutton brings, I think, a great business plan to this site. It looks good, it adds a lot of jobs to the city, tax base. What struck me when I was reading it was that the land is not suitable for a four-story hotel without a lot of, you know, reconstruction piling upon piling to make it suitable. So if we're looking at multistructure development, it's limited, you know, and maybe that's why it's been 10 years that we haven't had a structure come in there. And I guess I didn't realize there's 19 feet of peat there. So the car dealership, and particularly this one, I think it's unique to Coon Rapids. We don't have a Honda dealership, and they've separated their entities from other suburbs so that, you know, will stand alone. It looks great. I think these car dealerships are making themselves stand out in this day and age. And I think that might have been all I was gonna say, but I will be supporting this in lieu of that land issue and the 10-year history that says not much else is going in there. But I think this brings a real plus to Coon Rapids.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Heckel.
I also will support this. I think the options are limited as far as what can go in there, like you said. I think the car dealership will bring good, high-paying jobs to our city. I think the location of it, I think is good. I would hope that we don't have, end up with another one down the road from that, but...
No guarantees.
That's competition.
There are no guarantees, right.
That's competition.
Business and reality of the marketplace. Correct. But that being said, I will also support this.
Well, I'll throw my thoughts in here as well. Mr. Sutton, I think it's a very nice plan. I just wish you would come in a year sooner. But I echo almost word for word the settlements of Commissioners Stevenson and Stevens. This petitioner for the center has been doing nothing but providing a disservice to the city of Coon Rapids. As has been previously said, he was, they- As has been previously said, he was, they were told over two years ago that we were not happy with their constantly coming in, making piecemeal changes to this PUD. Last year, they came in, the commission did not approve, as the letter states that was put out by Silverstone, the commission denied this addition to, for Walzer Unit to expand to the Swim Center Lot. It was then taken to the council, and the council subsequently approved it. But the commission denied it last year. They did not approve it. We were certainly hoping to have varied and different uses on this property. Now, we're going to, in all likelihood, end up with 20 acres of cars sitting there. My goodness. Going to make us look like Highway 494 did back in the 60s, where it was nothing but car dealership upon car dealership, side by side, whereas Commissioner Stevens has already said, like Roseville over on 35W. And that's not my illusion of what I want to see Coon Rapids looking like. Highway 10 is a major thoroughfare through the city, and I just not in all good faith and conscience, I'll vote for this proposal. And again, it's nothing against you, Mr. Sutton, and your proposal. I just wish you'd come in sooner, or would have a different location. All right. Couple of the commissioners had mentioned to allow Mr. Sutton a rebuttal if he wished
I'd like to start by talking a little bit more about the development. So, we started this thing in 2005. We were in a completely different marketplace. We went through a year and a half of design guidelines with the city staff and planning commission and city council at that time. We still have those design guides in place. We've been providing very high-quality buildings to this development. I don't know that there's any other Coon Rapids developments currently that have design guidelines that require some of the things that we're doing on our buildings currently, meaning stone, you know, accent lighting. We're maintaining all of our own property. It's a private road. We have been doing a fair amount of things, and for 13 years, we've been marketing this site. It's not in our business to not market the property. So, we have been trying to do what we can to make this thing happen, and at this point, this is the most viable thing to do. Honda has been awarded, it just was awarded two months ago. So, this is something that's come to our attention recently, and this is one site in Coon Rapids that this Honda dealership can go on. And based on what I had mentioned before, from radio searches, there are no other sites currently in Coon Rapids that this dealership could go on. So, Mr. Sutton can talk more about the Honda dealership aspect of it, and maybe job growth and incomes and so forth that hasn't been mentioned yet.
From the highway, the dealership facility will be about 50,000 square feet. The total land mass is close to 500,000 square feet. So, 90% of the land will have landscaping. So, as you view it from the highway, yes, you will see automobiles, but the landscaping requirements that we're in agreement with will make the site appealing to the eye. So, from an environmental standpoint, it's actually going to be very environmentally friendly. Our Honda facility is a gold medal winner for environmental friendly, so we use boilers, we will be using boilers to heat the floors. Our emissions will be limited because we'll use, of course, LED lighting. It will be a high-energy efficient building, so it will also be a very green, environmentally friendly building. Auto dealerships, as the nation has shifted from a manufacturing base, where a lot of our manufacturing jobs, they were paying $20, $30 an hour, have now gone to Asia or other parts of the world, auto dealerships have emerged as major employers in communities. So, when you look at the cumulative total of the property tax revenue to the city of Coon Rapids by the other properties, this facility will match or exceed the cumulative total, because it's about, it's going to be around a $15 million project. So, this property tax revenue to the city will be substantial. In addition, I mentioned 150 jobs. The average wage salary is around $52,000 to $60,000. So, the majority of the staffers are auto technicians and salespeople and other staff, administrative staff. But, you know, they're good paying jobs that have replaced a lot of manufacturing jobs that simply don't exist. So, when you look at the jobs versus the other uses that you mentioned, retail outlets, and I'm not disparaging other retail businesses, but the reality is, those are $10 an hour jobs, and most of them do not have health insurance, where all of our team members have health insurance. And that may not mean a lot to some people, if you have it, but to non-college graduates, and most of our team members are non-college graduates, they're trade school, they've gone to trade school for a couple of years, they're community college graduates, and this is a tremendous opportunity for them to be part of middle-class America. And that's what we bring to these different villages and cities that we are a member of. So, as an employer, I mentioned, we've been in the business for over 27 years. We have all the awards, if you will, for customer satisfaction and sales effectiveness, which is how we earn the dealership. But we're also very involved in the community. Personally, our family has always been very involved on school boards, mentoring programs, public speaking in the schools. And so, we're not just here to be a retailer and leave, if you will. So, I hear your concerns on the different purposes. I don't have to remind you that we have gone through some of the best times the last, since '05, and some of the worst times in our nation's history, in that the economy was rocking and rolling from '05 to '07, '08. And then in the fall of '08, you know, Lehman went down, and we had our worst recession since the Great Depression of '29, '30. Having said that, again, I'm not a developer, but I would submit to you that if you haven't attracted a hotel or some of these other retail outlets in the best of the best times the last four years since the Great Depression or the crash, the likelihood of getting one, it's, I mean, it could happen, but there's a reason why it hasn't happened in the best of the best times. The other reality we live in is that, you know, the Amazons of the world are taking over, right? So, the boxes are going away, you know, they're going away. And you see it around town, as you drive around town, more and more box stores closing, closing. So, the economy has shifted, retail automotive is still projected to sustain and to continue to grow. We bring high-quality jobs, we employ high-quality people, and we will be a great addition to your community, if you allow us to be. Okay? And I'd be happy to take any questions if you have any.
Commissioner, any questions? Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Schmalki?
I'd like to make a motion that in Planning Case 17-7, that we recommend...
17-7?
17-17, thank you. That we recommend approval of the proposed PUD amendment with the conditions as stated in our packet.
I'll second.
Motion by Schmalki, second by Noblock, to approve the Planning Case 17-17, the amendment to Gateway Commerce Center. Mr. Harlecker?
Yes?
Will, we see this again as far as, if this is approved, will we see this again as far as site plan for things like the building design and materials, things of that nature?
Chair Schwartz, yes, you guys will be back before you, with a full site plan of similar to the other development in Gateway.
Thank you. All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. So, we have Stevens, Stevenson, and Schwartz opposed. The motion passes. This is a recommendation by the planning commission with going to the city council on July 5th. Good luck. All right, our next case, planning case, this is a revocation of a conditional use permit of Planning Case 91-91, 10870 Eagle Street, Dennis Strandberg. Mr. Harlecker?
Yes, Commissioner Schwartz, Chair Schwartz, Commissioner.
As part of our ongoing effort to weed out these old home occupation conditional use permits that are no longer being conducted, every couple of months, or every month, we'll be back with one or two. And this one here was a conditional use permit that was issued back in 1991 for a tool sharpening business. The applicant is no longer operating here. In September 1991, planning commission approved the permit. On May 12th, a letter was sent to the address and asking if they are still in business. By May 31st, we had not been contacted, and we began the revocation process. On June 2nd, a public hearing notice was sent to the address stating that the conditional use permit had been placed on tonight's agenda for revocation. With that, staff is recommending that in Planning Case 91-91, the commission revoke the home occupation conditional use permit for the tool sharpening business, based on the finding that the home occupation is no longer in operation at this address.
Thank you, Mr. Harlecker. This time, I will open a public hearing in the revocation of the conditional use permit, Planning Case 91-91. Anyone here wishing to speak to this matter? Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Commissioner?
In Planning Case 91-91, I recommend that we revoke the home occupational conditional use permit for tool sharpening, based on the finding that the home occupation is no longer operating at this address. Second.
Motion by Stevens, second by Schmalki. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? This is a decision by the planning case, planning commission, and can be appealed to the city council within 10 days if someone so chooses. Next, we have, consider a resolution finding for a proposed TIF district is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Mr. Harlecker?
Chair Schwartz, I can...
All right. Mr. Freilis?
Chair Schwartz and members of the planning commission, this item is related to the Riverdale Station apartment project that we previously heard about this evening. For quite a while, the city and the developer have been talking about the need for tax increment financing for this project that would be used to assist with a number of the public improvements that will be built as part of this project. TIF is a tool that is typically used on projects like this, so it's not unusual that there's a request associated with this project. The city and the EDA will be considering creation of the TIF district in July. This will be a housing-type TIF district. It will have the identifier of District 1-32. However, this particular development is not located within the city's redevelopment plan or its project area for our tax increment financing program. So, under state law, in order to create this district, the city has to modify its redevelopment plan, and that process involves the planning commission. And so, the commission, which of course is the group that advises the council on land use matters and the comprehensive plan, is asked this evening to make sure that the plan is in, or that this TIF plan is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And so, we have a couple of things in your packet tonight. We have the resolution, which we're asking you to consider and approve tonight. There is also a copy of the TIF plan, which is a rather long document, but kind of establishes the findings and the purpose for creating the TIF district. I can certainly answer questions on that, if you have that as well. I think the bigger thing is the map, which includes the proposed project area as well as the actual district. So, one thing you may notice if you look at the map is that the proposed TIF district is actually within that project area. So, one of the reasons why we do that is that, of course, that's where the increment will be generated, so that's one of the reasons why the district is a defined area. The other part of it is that we have the ability, by expanding the project boundary, to utilize some of the increment that will be generated by this project to pay for improvements that may be outside of the actual development site. So, there may be some things along Northdale and/or the park-and-ride lot that may be part of this development proposal, and by establishing the project area boundary a little bit larger, we have the flexibility to utilize some of those increments to pay for those improvements. So, in a nutshell, tonight, I think the action for the planning commission is to adopt the resolution that makes the findings that the TIF plan and the modification to the redevelopment program and project area are consistent with the comprehensive plan. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Freilis? All right. Anyone?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Casey?
I move that the planning commission adopt a resolution...
Oh, that's right. No, there is no public hearing on this.
No hearing on here.
It's just us.
Just for the commission.
I move that we adopt Resolution PC 17-1, finding that the modification to the redevelopment plan for redevelopment project area number one and the tax increment financing plan for tax increment financing District 1-32 conformed to the comprehensive plan.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Stevens. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Motion passes. This is a decision by the planning commission. And moving on to other business, we have Planning Case 14-1, a site plan at Magnum Trucking. Mr. Harlecker?
Yes, Chair Schwartz and commissioners. Recently, we received a building permit for Magnum Trucking's warehouse building. Back in February 2014, the commission approved a site plan for Magnum Trucking. Site plan included a truck terminal and a warehouse, and it's been constructed in two phases. Truck terminal was constructed as Phase 1, and the warehouse would be constructed as Phase 2. The terminal was, began construction shortly after site plan approval, and it's currently in operation.
currently in operation. One of the conditions of that site plan was that the developer come in with construction of the second phase, the warehouse, within five years of approval, and they have done that. At the time of site plan approval, the city code did not allow precast aggregate panels, so the plan for the warehouse showed construction of split-phase block. Since then, the city code has changed to allow architectural precast panels and exposed aggregate as a finish. The applicant has submitted an application for building permit for the warehouse. The exterior of the warehouse includes the integrally colored precast panels with an exposed aggregate finish on all four sides. The design of the building, other than the proposed change in material, excuse me, is consistent with the approved plan. Plan requires it no more than sixty-five percent of any one material. Proposed elevations do comply with that sixty-five percent mix of materials requirement. The applicant is in the audience tonight to kind of go over, and I'll let him explain the reasons why the proposed change.
Thank you, Mr. Harlecker. Commissioner, I'd like to come up and make the presentation, please.
Commission and Chair, thanks for accommodating us on the agenda tonight. Appreciate that. We've got a few items here that I'd like to show that help illustrate what Mr. Harlecker was talking about.
Can we have your name?
Marcos with Amcon Construction.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is a piece of the precast, shows the aggregate color for a plan to use. And they don't make these in the thin pieces, it only comes in big thicker chunks, so I have the, the other texture of the precast that we'll be using as well. This is a rendering of the proposed building, and this is the, we've helped out there already.
Could you pass the two pictures of mine to us, please? Thank you.
Now, this is, I'll just kind of explain real quickly, but this is the proposed building. The light areas, the lightest areas, the piece on the right, the exposed aggregate, this is what's called the smooth exposed aggregate. And both the dark areas are corridorite exposed aggregate, and then the entrances are darker even skelton.
And what are the entrances composed of?
That's these three elements here. And this is a...
Oh, yeah, okay, I didn't hear you, sorry.
So they have a contrasting color. Part of the reason for our change, is as Mr. Harlecker said, the, at the time, precast was not allowed on this building, and we were interested in making sure we had the whole development approved at that time. And knowing that we wouldn't be building this building for a year or two, we knew we'd come back and request the change to precast. We showed it as concrete block at the time, which was allowed. The precast is a, is a better material for this type of building. I think it's more in scale, I think it's going to look better. It's a much more energy-efficient product. It provides about three times what the state energy code would require, and it's also a more durable product for a warehouse. It's got the insulation encapsulated within the panel and provides a durable surface on the inside of the building. We think it'll coordinate nicely with the building that we built.
Mr. Harlecker, did the building code change from twenty fourteen to now? That was the reason?
Correct, the zoning code has changed to allow this type of material that you're looking at tonight.
Yeah, that's what it was, thank you.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Stevenson.
Can you clarify where on the site this build, the warehouse is being built?
If they could pull up the, the overhead. This is the warehouse here with the maintenance building. The warehouse, or excuse me, that's the terminal.
Tractor.
And it's the warehouse in this location here. On the site now, it's, it's the big open spot.
Right. Okay, thank you.
The location of the building hasn't changed. The, the significant changes is what you're looking at tonight is the change in material.
How are the two buildings going to look next to each other, the fact that they aren't going to match?
I think they're going to look very good. This is a, a very common material for this type of building, and what we built was the truck terminal that had the office portion, which is a low, a fairly low single-story building. The colors, I think, are going to coordinate very nicely. And you can see the two different pictures there. They are very different buildings. We have cornices on the two entry elements there on the existing building, and there'll be a similar metal cornice in the same color on the proposed building. The rock face block that we have on the existing building, I think, will coordinate nicely with the exposed aggregate finish on the precast panels.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask a question?
Mr. Frenelius.
Chair Schwartz and the Planning Commission, this is probably directed at the applicant, so I just want to clarify the image of the rendering that you provided, the one that I'm holding up. Is that the actual image of the building that would be constructed, or is this a...
That is.
I mean, this looks like a, kind of a multi-tenant building, is that's what...
That's exactly what we presented for a building permit.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah. Commissioner and Chairs, this is the, the elevation of what was approved. So it's got the three fronts with the ephes around it, which is what is being shown.
We're not, we're not seeing the overhead.
Is there anything for us to look at on the screen? It's not on our screen.
It's not.
Do you have the overhead down?
No, there it is.
There we go.
This is the, the elevation that was, was approved by the commission. You can see it's got the three front entrances for the different tenant spaces, and those are ephes, a darker ephes, and that's what's being proposed here in this elevation. What is changing then are these, these bands and different shading color. Instead of being block, like here, you still have the bands, you still have the windows across the bottom, the ephes around the entrances, but the, the change in colors is being done with a difference of material and slight change in color? Or is the color going to be the uniform for all?
It's, it's, yeah, I think it's, it's fairly close to what's on the existing building. It'll coordinate well with that.
Yes, and, and staff brought this to the commission tonight because they thought it was a significant enough change that the commission take a look at it, it's just that the timing was right, that we could get it on for tonight's agenda.
Well, it looks to me like the original picture showed considerably more windows.
We've actually, this is the, the version that's submitted for building permit. And we've actually made the large windows a little bit larger, I believe, than...
Can you get them both?
No, I think they're the same size. They take up the full width of the panel, which is an eight-foot-wide window.
So they do have...
Okay. Because you're using the, the big board, again, it, it shows considerably less windows.
Yes, yeah, the rendering does show, show less windows.
Yep.
We kind of went back and forth on a couple of designs, but what we've submitted for permit...
This, the, this window here, this sheet A three point O, is what was submitted with the building permit.
All right. That, that's where I was confused, is the rendering. Thank you. And Mr. Harlecker, we don't have a public hearing or anything on this?
No.
All right. And Commission, what are, what are your desires?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Stevenson.
I'm sure I'm the only one who remembers this, but I voted against this entire project back in twenty fourteen. Oh, but I'm going to vote for this because I think it's a fine change in the design, even though I was against the project to begin with. Just explaining my own inconsistencies.
We don't have a planning case number or anything to go with? Fourteen one?
Fourteen oh one.
Fourteen oh one? We don't have any conditions, I mean, we're, because it was, do you have a verbiage?
Just something verbal, saying that you are concurring with a proposed change. Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Stevenson.
Fourteen oh one?
Yeah, in planning case fourteen one, I move that the commission concur with the design changes proposed by the applicant.
I second.
Motion by Stevenson, second by Nabalak. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Mr. Harlecker, anything else under other business or current development updates?
Well, I know everybody's been waiting for this. We did get a building permit submitted for the Golden Corral.
Ooh.
And the old country bumpay building in front of Target on Hundred Twenty-fourth. So I know we did a lot of phone calls when that's coming, so they submitted a building permit, so it's, it's up to them now to make the, I'll assume they have construction underway.
Sounds good.
What was the location again?
The old, it was...
The old country bumpay.
The street around the corner.
All right.
Kind of by Home Depot there.
Yeah.
I noticed, just driving by the hospital, that the perforated panels are going up. Yeah, that's a, a nice look. Are they going to be painted yet?
I don't believe they are, they were just...
Just the same color?
Yeah, treated so, during the production.
It's a good look.
Mr. Harlecker, the Hanson Overpass project, is there any news on, on that? That was in, that was approved by the legislature in the bonding bill, is that correct?
Yep. And, go ahead, Grant.
Yeah, Chair Schwartz, the planning commission, yes. So as part of the bonding bill, the city received an allocation of, of bond funds, I forget the amount, twelve and a half million, I think, something in that range. Roughly half the project. Roughly half the project to help pay for that. So yes, that's a, a major, a major achievement that we all should be very excited about.
Is there any timeline for when that project might happen?
So I haven't been directly involved in the project. My understanding is that a lot of the preliminary engineering has been underway. I believe the plan is to start that, I think that's a twenty eighteen project, as I, as I understand, so.
Some of the utility work might start this fall.
I believe that's the...
It has to happen first, but the construction is next year.
Right.
And it will involve shutting down Hanson.
Yep.
And I can be able to do it peacefully.
I have a question, Mr. Harlecker. The, the same usual question, any developments on reuse of the old Sears location?
Not yet.
Okay. Just asking.
All right, anybody have anything else?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Third.
Motion by Stevenson, second by Casey. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Please adjourn.